Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll? Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Talavantes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Jennings, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, Southern Mido people, the Valley and Plains, Miwok, and Patnam-Wentum. And to the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, once again, a very good afternoon. Welcome to the members of the public, my colleagues, the city staff. Let us begin today with a asking first. I'm sorry, I need to ask the city attorney. Do we have a report out of closed session, Madam City Attorney?
There's nothing to report on at this time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Then let us begin with a special presentation. I'd like to turn it over to councilmembers Kaplan and Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Hope you have something special planned, but I think there's nothing better than to recognize an organization that started and was founded in 2009 by Armando Flores, but since then has had over hundreds of volunteers that does good for our city. Out of the kindness of his heart, every Sunday at 8:00 a.m., you can find him across the street feeding those that are less fortunate than us. He's not come to us to ask for anything other than, out of the kindness of his heart, doing things and showing the way by being a leader, such, so much so, that one of my constituents, Maribella, for the past eight years has also done Backpacks for Love, who has found and gotten donated backpacks to also give out to those in need. So your heart extends beyond just this program for what you've been doing to also influence others. And so we're here to recognize you. But before we give you a chance to speak and to have Marcia come up as well, I would like to turn it over to my fellow councilmember, whose district this actually occurs in.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Armando, you, your work is so simple and so important, and I know you understand that. The meals, the warm coffee, the clothing, the shoes, whatever you can offer to people on the streets is a matter of survival in many cases, not just the physical survival of not starving and having clothes to clothe themselves, but the survival that's needed from human connection, right? And really knowing that there are people in the community who will show up, rain or shine, at 8:00 in the morning every week and make sure that their needs are met in the best way that you can. I was really excited to see the community during COVID try to wrap their arms around you. I know our poet laureate did the first church of poetry for many weeks and, you know, made sure that all the proceeds that he collected went to you to support the work that CAF was doing. I mean, you are, you're an inspiration to a lot of us, even though you might not know it. Your silent consistency and your love for our community are just really evident. So I think our office thinks that we could use a lot more Armandos in Sacramento, and what CAF does is just so important. So thank you for being here tonight, and I look forward to hearing your words.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Flores. And thank you, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I just want to give you a little bit of, an idea of what we do and what we have done for actually 13 years plus. We are a group that is mainly interested in feeding homeless people and helping them with all the supplies that they need to survive being on the streets. Our group is a grassroots group funded by family and friends. We don't have any really big sponsors right now that are helping us. We've been doing this all on our own. We are serving at the moment between 100 and 150 people every single week. And that's, you know, quite a bit of work for my volunteers and the people that come and help because we, by the time we get to the park, they're so desperate to get a cup of coffee and some food and whatever. So we are feeding 6,000 meals plus every year.
Wow.
So by, from the time we started to now, you know, I figure we're over 80,000-plus meals that we have done, not including the other survival gear that we give out, which is blankets, tarps, backpacks, sleeping bags. And anyway, so I want to just let you guys know, you know, what the needs are for these people. We give them a brand-new pair of socks almost every single week. And right now, with the weather that we've had in the last few months, we have gone through, like, hundreds of blankets and tarps that we have provided, and then they got wet or ripped, so we had to replace them. So it's quite a bit of job, but thank you to my volunteers and a lot of the people that are donors who are able to do this. And Lisa, thank you, because you've been one of our volunteers for quite a while, almost since we started. You helped us quite a bit, along with Maribella. And I would like to have Marcia give us a little bit of information about what her and her husband are in charge of with our group.
Hi, my name is Marcia Robinson. Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to touch on some of the volunteers that we have for CAFE, starting with my husband Rodney Robinson, who's been a volunteer for nine years with CAFE. He's in charge of overall the clothing, our transportation, our storing of the clothing every week. And we have a team that also organizes the clothes in the shed that we have, so we couldn't be organized without them. We also have some great volunteers, like Shelley Bowman and Carly and Greta and James. And some of these that I, names that I've mentioned are actually unhoned themselves or used to be unhoned but still come out for services. So I'm grateful for working along volunteers like themselves as well, establishing relationships with this community and allowing them a space where they can turn around and give back but are always taking. So they really do help us communicate with others on the street, and we are just very thankful to be able to have a place like Plaza to go ahead and serve the community. So thank you.
Thank you. If you would like, your volunteers will come down. Katie, if you want to join me, and councilmembers, we can take.
Can I do something first?
Yeah, absolutely, Armando.
I would like to have Maribella be part of our presentation because she has, from the age of nine, has been running a project where she collects backpacks for Valentine's Day. It started when she was nine years old, and this is the last year.
Fourth grade, and by the way, that's fourth grade.
This is going to be the last year she's going to help us because she's going to go away to school. So we have a presentation for her for all her work that she has done for CAFE.
And just a brag moment, I've known this family for an extremely long time, and I am proud that her brother is my district director. So this family's care for our community runs very deep.
I love that. Volunteers, and let's all take a picture together, all right, so we can, Sean had something to say. Go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that it's an absolute honor to have you here, and I cannot thank you enough. You know, we have a lot of wonderful organizations out there that help out, and then we have also a lot of organizations that like to pretty much complain and do nothing. You're one of those organizations that helps out, but you're under the cover. So we need more individuals like you, and it's an absolute honor, and I'm so grateful that you are Sacramentoan, and congratulations to you that you've started this at age nine, and you're going to go all the way up. So I'm honored to be here amongst you today. Thank you very much.
All right, guys. Turn around.
I got the good angles, huh?
I thought someone was going to have me.
Cameras, I know.
I can take.
Oh, sorry.
Where are you going to college?
Well, I don't know yet.
Okay. Somewhere good.
Great way to start the meeting. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
Thank you.
All right, members, let us move now to consent calendar items 1 through 10. Are there any items that members would like to have discussed or voted on separately? I see none. Is there a motion on the?
Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just had a question on item one.
Go right now, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't get a chance, and you were out of town, City Manager, last week to ask about the status of some of the homeless update items. I think it's items, some of them I think were repeated. It was 25, 26, and 20, but I think 20 was a repeat item. I know you talked a couple weeks ago about a timeline, but I was just wondering if you had an update on when that might come back.
Yeah, so I think there was an email that went out with updates on those things from, I'll make sure, if you haven't already received it, I'll follow with my team on it, because I think there was an email that gave some of those updates on timing.
Okay.
Yeah, you know.
Could we tell the public when we might bring that back?
I don't have a date right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
We do have two.
So moved by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Vice Mayor Gata. Let's hear from the two witnesses.
Thank you. I'd like to remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, when that item begins, if you're in council chambers, fill out a speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips in chambers, and the raised hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. I have two speakers in chambers, Marbella Sala, then Chris Palomo. Marbella's speaking on item four, and Chris on item 11.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Yes, I'm happy to be here. I'm Marbella, as you all know, and I'm the president of the Garnland-Northgate Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of support of Agenda Item 4, the monies that's going to go towards Nino's Parkway. GNNA has been wanting attention to Nino's Parkway. It's a beautiful jewel that we have in our neighborhood that connects various neighborhoods along that pathway. And during COVID, it was a place for our community to come outside and get exercise, and I used it almost every day, and it was very heartwarming to see how many people were traveling Nino's Parkway. What is very gratifying for us is to see that this money is going to go toward extending the bike lane and walkway on the other side of San Juan. And what that will do is connect all our neighborhoods that, through South Natomas, Garnland, Northgate, but more importantly is we have several schools that the children use the Parkway to get to school. You have Strauss School, Smythe School, Rio Chiara, and they use that Parkway to get to school. And now, with the sidewalk and the lights and the bike lane going further out, you will, we'll be able to connect Garden Valley Elementary School children, the families that live in Chuck Wagon Park will be able to use that, and it'll connect all our neighborhoods. It'll be a long connection. I think it's very gratifying, and we're very pleased that after it was approved in 2019, you now are putting, you have the resources to invest in it. And our hope with GNNA is that this is phase two, we'll have a phase three and phase four for Nino's Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Chris Palomo on item 11.
That concludes our public comment for the consent calendar. Thank you, team.
Sorry. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Consent calendar passes. Let's now move to item 11.
We're quite the team.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Dolla, associate planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you is the Trinity House Rezone and Mixed-Use Conversion Project located at 2701 and 2711 Capitol Avenue. The applicant is requesting to convert a vacant building previously operated as a residential care facility into a mixed-use development consisting of 65 apartment units, ground-floor restaurant space, and 17 parking stalls. The project will include only building interior remodeling, no exterior building modifications or construction resulting in increased floor area would occur because of the project. To facilitate the conversion, the applicant is requesting a reason of the project sites from the hospital and the office business low-rise mixed-use zones within the Central City Special Planning District and site plan and design review to review the change of use and minor site improvements. The Planning and Design Commission reviewed the item at the January 12 PDC hearing, where they forward a approval recommendation consistent with staff's recommendation. And with that, I am available to answer any questions that you may have. Additionally, the applicants, Kevin and Kirk Sejen, are also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for that presentation, and I want to appreciate staff's time, too, for taking time to check in with me earlier. And this is not, it's related to this project, but not super-related to what's in front of us, and so I'm going to editorialize a little bit because this is transitioning senior housing essentially into market-rate housing. And I've gotten a few emails about this because one of the trends that really troubles me when I look at my, our point-in-time count among many trends is that one of the growing populations on the streets are seniors, and that is due to no small part the lack of affordable and accessible senior housing for folks who are largely on fixed income. So I reached out to some folks at the city, and I know we talked to SHRA when the, you know, closing was happening, and we've talked to the folks at HCD at the state. There are tools that can be used to sometimes protect housing that's transitioning like this, but this project didn't quite hit any of the marks of the laws that are there, and it would never quite fit. So I really want to name this because there is a program and a policy called the Opportunity to Purchase Act. It's something that is broadly used in the Bay and the East Coast, it's been used in DC for a long time, but essentially the concept is that when someone who owns a tenant-occupied building or a multifamily building and they're going to sell it, they can name the price, but then there's a certain amount of time where an affordable housing provider or the government or the tenants themselves can decide that they want to try to buy the building. So it keeps it from transitioning into the sort of investor-feeding frenzy that we can often see in some of these situations. And if that price can meet, it basically means we're keeping that housing and we're preventing that displacement of the folks who live there. So, and this is really the primary and kind of only tool that I know to prevent the proliferation of investor-owned purchases of properties, which I know Councilmember Laloe and others have mentioned specifically, is a really big concern. And especially given that we're looking at a potential recession. I know a lot of us are looking at that recession and what prior recessions have done, particularly to people who are losing housing and wanting to make sure we have tools available. So while it is too late for the Trinity House in this case, I did want to flag this project as an example of another opportunity that we should explore for the future, something, a policy that we could really bring to Sacramento. We've been working, our office has been working with a coalition of advocates on a package of housing ordinances, and I know the mayor and I are working on the idea of bringing workshops to council to talk about housing, and I want this tool to be part of that conversation so that we can talk about future Trinity Houses and how we might keep them from moving into market-rate conversion in this fashion. But all that to say with my brief editorial comments about this project done, I have no issues with this project application and the rezoning as it stands. It is obviously a super-prime location. It's close to entertainment, it's close to businesses, it's close to jobs, it's close to transit. So I'm happy to, I think this is a public hearing, yes, open and close the public hearing and move the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and second that. Also want to thank Carlo and Zach for their work on this, and also appreciate them coming out to the campus commons, campus commons community to support and listen to what the community is saying about a particular issue. I'll only also say that there are, you know, other programs that have tried to do this, like the Mobile Home Park Residency and Rehabilitation Program, that allows residents to buy their program. One of the biggest challenges is the technical assistance required to help those residents be able to do that. So I think there's an opportunity there, as Councilmember Valenzuela said, to find a way to meet those programs with that, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have two people signed up to testify.
Our first speaker is Chris Palomo, and then Jennifer Jones, and it looks like Jack Blatner.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you. I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to talk about the Trinity House project. I'm excited for this development, you know, to pursue. It's much-needed into the area. My concern, first and foremost, is always the workers, the ones that are going to be building this project. Are they going to be paid a livable wage, you know, have health care, especially, you know, COVID-19, all these other, you know, flus and stuff that's going around? You know, health care is very vital right now, and a joint apprenticeship program, you know, that's a reinvestment back into the community, and that's huge. I just want to make sure that the developer is going to choose a responsible contractor that will, you know, force their, you know, the general contractor, all their subcontractors, sorry, subcontractors underneath them to follow these guidelines, because especially in the residential sector, it's a crime scene, man. These workers are misclassified, actually, two-thirds of the workers in residential are misclassified, paid under the table. There is over $28 billion in funds that are for construction workers who can't make ends meet. That's sad, and that's unacceptable in my eyes, and I think that, I hope you guys feel the same way. And so that's just, yeah, I would just want to make sure that the developer understands that and is willing to pick a responsible contractor for this project, to make sure that that doesn't happen again. You know, we have over 1,200 contractors in the 46 county, Northern 46 counties of California that are responsible, so it shouldn't be a problem to be able to find a contractor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jennifer Jones.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
So I wasn't originally going to comment on this, but we have a gigantic homeless problem, in case you haven't noticed. It has grown exponentially under Mayor Steinberg's leadership, and I feel that this, having this kind of housing turned into market-rate housing is just doing the opposite of what we need to be doing. We need to be adding low-income housing. And, I mean, the amount of shelter beds alone that have been added under your leadership has been less, it covers less than the amount of the homeless population when you took office, and that has grown by three times or more since you took office. You campaigned on the promise of helping the homeless, but yet you're going to take low-income senior housing and turn it into market-rate housing that, quite frankly, no one can afford. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you recognize, but the rents are out of control, people are, there are more people becoming homeless by the day, and meanwhile, we're giving the city manager 42% raises over a six-year period, you know? Like, this is insane. I don't, I don't understand how any of you guys can get away with any of this. And so I oppose this. I think that we need to be focused on low-income home housing for our seniors. I think in this state, there's no excuse for the level of homelessness that we have, and the fact that Sacramento has more homeless now than San Francisco, is that totally disgusting and shows that none of you are doing your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The final speaker is Jack Blatner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This is Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber, representing over 600 member businesses in the six-county region. We'd like to express our strong support for item 11. While we appreciate the concerns about what Trinity House could have been, in fact, it was, it was vacated. It wasn't housing anyone, and because unused land in our central city is extremely valuable, we're very happy that the city will be putting this parcel to mixed use to bring 65 badly needed housing units into the market, and we believe that dense housing in central locations, like this item will provide, is the best way to alleviate our housing supply deficit and promote sustainable growth. So we hope to see more conversions like this come to the council in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment, if I might. So I hear the previous speaker's frustration, and if the argument is that we do not have enough affordable housing and we have a serious homeless problem, I completely agree with you. But I don't think it is accurate, on behalf of the city and all of my colleagues, and I suppose including myself, to describe it the way you described it. The fact of the matter is, when I started as mayor, we had less than 100 shelter beds a night in this city. We weren't in this business. We now operate and contract for 1,100 a night. In addition, in late 2022, you might remember, we approved the funding for 800 additional units of affordable housing. That's on top of several thousand that have already been funded locally and are waiting to be constructed. Do we have a lot more to do? You better believe it. Is it this city's fault that homelessness has grown?
Yes.
That's, you're entitled to your opinion. I don't think so. I think that this city has stepped into a place that it never has before. And finally, now we are working collaboratively with the county that does mental health, substance abuse, and we have a partnership agreement, and we're going to keep going, and we're going to keep driving and keep building more. It's a major priority of this entire city council, but I just want the record, at least from my perspective, to be clear about what we've done and what we continue to try to do. Thank you. All those in favor of the project, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes. Thank you very much. Let's move now, I think item 12 and 13 can be taken up together. So why don't we take them together?
Good evening, everyone. Jose Mendez with Community Development Department here to present items 12 and 13 together regarding code compliance fees and penalties for special assessment and personal obligations. For item 12, the report reflects an amended total of 75 properties with a total of $74,049 and 1 cent of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against each of these properties. For item 13, the report reflects an amended total of 168 properties with a sum total of $346,411.79 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and personal obligations against each of these properties. Staff recommend that city council adopt two resolutions separately as amended to allow for the collection of unpaid balances by placing special assessment levies and personal obligations upon these properties. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there public testimony in items 12 and 13?
I have no public testimony on either.
Okay, let's take motions on each, I guess separately, is that necessary? Okay? Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Councilmember Laloe, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question, and I can, I guess, where'd you go, Jose? Hold on a second, you were just up there. Or even, Mr. City Manager. you go, Jose? Hold on a second. You were just up there. Or even, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to know, what is the average annual fines and, where did you go? Oh, there you go. I'm sorry. My apologies. You know, what are the average fines and fees that we're collecting based on, on these situations? And also, I'm trying to just, and we had a, a good meeting last week, but my questions were not really answered. And I was, you know, especially given my district, you know, which we have the, the highest number of code, code enforcement officers are in my district versus the rest of the city, which I'm, I'm very grateful for that. I'm just trying to get a better understanding on what is our approach? Are we, you know, are we proactive? Is it reactive? We have a lot of land that's causing a lot of nuisance. We have buildings that are not safe. We have slum landlords that are literally causing individuals to be either evicted or when the property goes under receivership, now they're out on the street. And given that we get so many complaints, especially in my office, about hazardous buildings, in particular, commercial buildings, and when they call and the case is closed, it gets closed. But yet, within days, the situation still exists. I, I just wanted to know, what is, you know, when, when we talk about vacant land or properties, buildings that are unsafe, I know this, we've been talking about this for about a year and a half, and I know it's coming to law and ledge. When can we get some, you know, definite answer of what are our policies? How can we be more proactive regarding these buildings that need to get updated? And the number of, you know, empty parcels within districts have become a complete health issue for the residents, a safety issue for the residents. And I wanted to just see, when, when can we get some feedback on that with some direct directions? Because, and I also want to know, how do the fees work? I mean, I see the fees, you know, in item 12 and 13. How do we get adjusted? How much are we collecting? And where are we really going to sit down and create a policy to become extremely proactive in this day and age?
Well, I'm going to, Councilmember, I'm going to let Jose speak to some of the specifics. But in general here, we're way more reactive. We're responding to calls for service. And in many cases, we can't keep up with them. And so some of the buildings you talk about, the dangerous buildings that we, we actually have contractors that board up dangerous buildings. And in a matter of days, like you said, people will come back and break in and do all sorts of things. So we're constantly playing catch up here. And, and so I think it's a good conversation to have as we're going into the budget season, talking about what we need to do. I know we've had some challenges just in recruitment for code enforcement officers. And, and I think you're right in that the calls for service are highest in your district for code enforcement, along with abandoned vehicles. I mean, that's another issue that we're chasing throughout the city. We just can't keep up. We continue to contract with tow services. The costs escalate, you know, the, the capture on these vehicles that get put out to auction don't nearly cover the costs. So it becomes an increasing burden on the general fund. But absolutely can talk about it as part of the budget process. But maybe Jose can fill in the blanks if I, or if I got something wrong.
No, absolutely. I don't have an average for you, but we could definitely get your report if needed. As far as reactive and proactive, we are more reactive. Your district takes up about 30% of the calls for service in the entire city. And like you said, has the most code enforcement officers, but it's still not enough. We have about 200 vacant buildings citywide, about 4,000 parcels that are undeveloped to monitor. So I think it comes down to resources, boots on the ground, number of officers. The more code enforcement officers we have, the more proactive we can be and the more outreach we can conduct and what more enforcement we can conduct as well.
Yeah, because I'm also very concerned with the absentee landlords, the slumlords that let their buildings just kind of fall apart. And, you know, again, my, my question is, as, as, as code goes, if you're driving by a building that you can tell it's falling apart, do we need, do you need a call to react to that? Or is it fairly pretty obvious to say, we need to send somebody here? There's an issue here.
We always want to prioritize complaints because if someone took the time to file a complaint, we want to prioritize that. But if there's a property that is eminently hazardous or dangerous to the public, then we will proactively address the issue upon finding it. So we, we, we monitor properties. We just don't have the sufficient staff to monitor all of them at the same time or as fast as we'd like to. On the board ups, we have staff that, that'll work 24/7, that are available 24/7 to board and secure at night upon request from the police department at, at all hours of time.
And I know this is something that it's in front of law and ledge already, Vice Mayor. I just was wondering, how can we prioritize some of these policies so we can get ahead of this? Because, you know, we have these landlords that don't even live in Sacramento, right? And they're collecting their rent on properties that are paid for. And they could care less about, you know, if the property is, you know, safe or dangerous property. And so I'm very concerned, especially when it comes to our senior citizens, that they're in a property that all of a sudden we assume unsafe, now they're evicted, we're bringing a receivership in there. And, you know, the, the victim becomes that innocent person that's paying rent while the landlord is sitting in San Francisco counting his money.
And there are special projects that, there's the Dixie An area that we have where we're identified, I think about 300 and something parcels. 98% of those are rental properties. And we will be inspecting each of those. But we, we're able to do that because of the funds that you provided for us. So I think a lot of it just comes down to resources and additional code enforcement staff to be able to do that.
So if you could please, maybe this is something that you could have a conversation with law and ledge. We need to know what those fees are and where they need to be. So whether it's adding more officers or giving you more tools, when I hear that many buildings that are very, you know, that's concerning. And this, and you just referred, referred to residential units. We have commercial properties that are just as, you know, in a worse situation if, if not, I mean, bad situation if not worse than some of those residential. So I, I would greatly appreciate it if, you know, within law and ledge, not only the vacant lots can be addressed, but also vacant buildings can also be addressed so we can come up with fees that would make sense. It's my understanding that our fees are still from years ago and things have changed. So I'm hoping that law and ledge would put this as a priority and maybe we can bring it back to council sometime in March so we can.
That, and the budget, you know, the budget process is beginning as well in terms of the need for more officers. It needs to be considered depending on whether we have money with all the other priorities and needs to bring it, bring it forward.
We should also increase our fees to offset the, the cost of the officers. But we have to do something sooner than later.
Let's look at that. Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, you know, and I, I've just, the follow off of the, follow up on that conversation, I think one of the requests we've already asked is ensure that we review the, the current structure and also, one, on the full, full cost recovery. I mean, I think that's important at, at the bare minimum. My understanding is the city manager and, and our code enforcement director are already looking at that. And I'd like to make sure that when we come back to the budget committee, that we are looking at full cost recovery, particularly for those on top of what is allowed on the fee structure. And I just want to thank code enforcement. I know you guys have been dealing with a lot of issues. There's, you're understaffed. I want to thank all the code officers who are out there working with the neighbors on very problem properties. I know there's some on 14th Avenue. Thank you, Jose, and your team for that work. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to open and close the public hearing and move the, both item one and open close the public hearing and move item, I mean, item 12 and item 13.
Okay. Now we have Councilmember Maple. Is there a second on both those motions?
Second.
Okay. Both have been moved and seconded. But Councilmember Maple.
Thank you. As, as someone whose district also has a lot of these properties in it, I just wanted to ask a little bit about, you know, not, there are some people, as, as Councilmember Lulowee mentioned, that are from out of town. They're making money. They're, they're rental properties. But also, there's some on this list that might be considered, folks that are low income and are having difficulty maintaining their property. I see some of my, some of my churches on here as well. And so I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit about the programs that are available or what the process is like for reaching out to folks who may not have, you know, the ability to pay for this or to do some of those upgrades on their properties.
Absolutely. Every landlord is provided an opportunity to contest our action. They also are provided a hearing to contest the cost. And if there's a financial hardship, they can, they can ask for leniency from the city. We are, we do have the ability, myself and the chief of code enforcement has the ability to negotiate penalties. The goal is compliance. And so if, if there's a compliance plan that we can place to obtain compliance, we can negotiate penalties to ultimately gain, resolve the issue, resolve the violation.
Great. So they can work their way through the process. What, what happens if you can't get ahold of them? Is it just goes through this process and then they get to this point?
Which is why our process is fairly tedious and somewhat lengthy. We, we will have to request a title report and notify all parties of interest to ensure that everyone knows if we can't get ahold of the property owner. The hope is that a responsible party will step in to correct the issues. But if they don't, then we have contractors on staff to then step in and, and remove the issue or correct the violation. But that's, it comes at a cost. Then we transfer that cost onto the property owner if they don't step in to correct the issue fast enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to at least highlight the, thank you for that and for Councilmember, the council for their support for the recent, you know, reinvestment money that we're, that we are looking to improve homes. And part of that is, yes, exactly. And the rock the block is part of what we're going to be doing in Oak Park to make sure that we address that for those homeowners, to make sure that we keep the housing stock. And wanted to make sure that we highlighted that we're putting some of that money as part of all of the Aggie Square Development and some success in moving forward with that.
$10 million. I mean, it's the only, only fund I know of around from the Aggie Square Development and the, and the, and the agreement with the community and the employees around the University of California Davis to put $10 million directly into helping people stay in their homes. Need to do more of that. Okay. Councilmember Lulowee.
Just a question. At $10 million, it's not going to rental properties for the landlords so we can fix up their properties, correct? These are property owners.
Not necessarily. They can be, they can either be renters or owners, but there has to be a direct link to ensuring that the people living there can stay living there. We do have a rent stabilization ordinance, as you know, in Sacramento that limits the rise of rents for older properties as well as a form of just cause eviction for those same properties. This money can be used for a wide variety of strategies for owners and for renters to be able to make sure that there is stability within the, within the network.
I just hope that we have our checks and balance, that, that we don't go and spend this money on properties that are, you know, have those slum landlords and they're waiting for this money to go and fix up their property. So hopefully there's.
Fair point. Well, it's got to be, it will be administered well to make sure that we're benefiting the individual living there. That's the key.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Let's call, all those in favor of item 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes nine to nothing. All those in favor of item 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. All right. Let's move now to the last item of the evening, and that is item 14.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Jose Quintanilla, associate planner with the Community Development Department. This item is P20 016, Bell Avenue Commercial Center. A request for a commercial development comprising of a two-story retail and office building and two drive-throughs at 1556 Bell Avenue in District Two. The project requires a rezone of two parcels from R1 to C2, a conditional permit for two drive-throughs, and site plan and design review for the construction of the development. Rezones require approval from the city council. The Planning and Design Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval to the council at the January 12, 2023 meeting. Some key points about this project, sidewalks, landscape planners, and frontage improvements are required around the entire perimeter of the site. A six foot tall solid wall will separate the development from the residential uses to the west. There are three driveways proposed, a right in, right out driveway on Bell Avenue, a left, and a left in and right in, right only, right out only driveway on Rayleigh Boulevard, and a full movement driveway on Catherine Avenue. Hours of operation for the drive-through closest to residential uses to the south have been limited to 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday and to midnight on Saturdays and Sundays. Trash pickup has been prohibited during peak traffic hours. Deliveries by larger trucks have been limited to the hours of 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM. The Planning and Design Commission also added a condition of approval requiring the installation of speed bumps at the rear of the retail and office building to discourage cut through traffic. Staff recommends approval of this project as conditioned, as it is consistent with city guidelines and no deviations to development standards are requested. The project developed an underutilized site, diversifies land uses in this area, especially through the provision of much-needed commercial services, and is consistent with policies in the North Sacramento Community Plan, which encouraged neighborhoods serving retail at this intersection. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant team are here for questions.
Okay. Councilmember Lulowee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for that presentation. This is a great project, which I, I support in full. And I want to thank the developer for taking the time and reaching out to the community and to make sure that between the associations and the residents, that they were all in support of this project. So it's a great project. We're bringing business to our community, you know, which is phenomenal. Once again, thank you so much to the staff for all the legwork that you guys have done. And I definitely support this project. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have no speakers on this item.
All right. All those in favor, please say. Oh, he didn't, he hadn't made the motion. I'm sorry.
We do need you to open and close the public.
Yes, please.
Mayor, beat me to it.
Moved by Councilmember Lulowee, seconded by Vice Mayor Getta, third by the mayor. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain.
Good job, Councilmember.
That passes. Good job unanimously. All right. Members, let's, let's go to council comments. Are there council comments on items not on the agenda? Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you. I couldn't remember if we've had a chance to comment since we did the staff appreciation breakfast after the storms, but I wanted to thank the team for pulling that together. It was really great to go visit with some of those workers who gave up many, many weekends trying to make sure that we reconnected with roadways and, you know, all the things that were necessary to make sure that our city recovered from the storms. I did want to just put in a plug because I know the mayor just mentioned that we're getting ready to start bargaining, or not start bargaining, start the budget season, that I hope we do start bargaining early. I think we're all worried about potential tight budget situations. And I just wanted to put out that note that I hope we take care of those workers before we try to figure out how the rest of the budget might fit together. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements that I want to make. Tree planting. I think we all know about the tremendous loss of trees that we've had in the Sacramento, and it has affected our parks. So we will have tree planting at Marriott Park on February the 25th. And this is in partnership with the South Pocket Homeowners Association. We encourage you to wear comfortable clothes. All the tools and direction will be provided. If you'd like more information about how you can participate, and I did say the 25th, I didn't say at 9:00 AM. So you can come on out there with us. You can call my office for more information about getting involved. We had a great showing at Lewis Park a couple of weeks ago where we planted over 25 trees there. So we want to see how many trees are needed here and make sure that we plant these trees so we can continue to be the city of trees. And then the Land Park Farmers Market, put on by Eco Friendly Greens. It runs every Sunday through the end of the year, rain or shine, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Section Four at the Village Green in William Land Park Regional Park. You can get fresh produce, baked goods, organics, microgreens, mushrooms, coffee, live music, free yoga, all in the park and fellowship with all of your neighbors in the neighborhood. So we encourage you to come out every Sunday from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at the Land Park Farmers Market, put on by Eco Friendly Greens. That's it, Mayor.
That's, that's excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Lulowee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I make the, the announcements, I think it's also very important that for individuals that might not know, there was a major earthquake in Turkey, Syria, and a part of Iran. As of right now, it's estimated that roughly around... As of right now, it's estimated that roughly around 60,000 people have lost their lives just in the country of Turkey, Syria being under sanctions. We still don't know those numbers, so the numbers are growing. You know, with what's going on at the same time about two days ago, they were able to rescue a six-year-old girl from the debris after a week of no water, no food, so it makes, anytime you kind of create a doubt on, is anybody watching us, maybe an event like this kind of confirms that maybe there is somebody watching us. So my heart and prayers goes to all those families and their loved ones, whether they're at home or here or anywhere else, any other countries. With that said, I didn't mean to bring the mood down.
No.
But I think it's important for us to understand what happens in some of these other countries, that then they don't have what we have in this country, so. Just a few announcements. The Greater Sacramento Urban League Community Health Fair is on Saturday, February 18th, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. at 3725 Marysville Boulevard. At Robertson Community Center, which is located at 3525 Norwood Avenue, there is a Black History Month celebration. Hope to see everyone there. Also, on Saturday, February 18th, our district will have its Mardi Gras Carnival, which starts at 11, and that's going to be on the Del Paso Boulevard. So hopefully we get to see all of you there and make sure that you bring plenty of beats, and we should have a lot of fun. And with that said, I also want to wish the girls, Grant's Girls Varsity Basketball Team, good luck to have a game tonight, and then the boys have a game tomorrow night, so wish both of them the best.
Go Pacers.
Go Pacers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have one announcement. Just wanted to take this opportunity to invite the community to our annual District 8 Community Conversation, happening this Saturday, February 18th, from 10 to 12. Doors will be open at 9 o'clock. We will have breakfast at the community center, and it's really a community forum and space to learn about projects, initiative, investment that's happening in our district and housing that's underway in District 8. So really, we encourage all of the residents, if you live in the south area, everything south of Florin, Cabrillo, Metta View, Hampton Station, Valley High, Delta Shores, North Laguna Creek, Detroit Community, if you're watching this, this is a call, an invitation to you. I know we've sent out social media blasts, emails, and texts, but wanted to also invite everyone publicly to attend our community conversation. We are doing RSVP because we want to make sure we have a good head count, so you can go to hardandhustle.org backslash D8CC 2023, and we'll make sure to also post the information on our social media as well, and you can follow us at CMMyVang. Thanks, Mayor.
I'm going to make one announcement myself. I'm going to have the third of my mayoral town hall meetings. Several Saturdays, last Saturday and two Saturdays before, I had town hall meetings. One in East Sacramento at Southern Middle School, two weeks prior at Hyrum Johnson West Campus. And this Saturday, I'm going to be hopefully with Councilmember Maple at the Oak Park Community Center on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard at noon for a town hall, and it's just that, the ability to ask your mayor, any questions you want to ask and to have a good community dialogue. So all members of the public are welcome. I'm sorry, Councilmember Telemontes, go ahead.
All right, you reminded me of the town hall, so I am hosting my first town hall as well on March 6th, on a Monday, at the Natomas High School Cafeteria, and I'm so excited because we're a brand-new district. Natomas, North Natomas, West Natomas, South Natomas, North Gate, and Garnelen, so I'm really trying to unify and make us one strong voice in the city of Sacramento. So I'm so excited, and I invite my community to come out, carina telemontes.org. Thank you.
I'm coming.
Oh, yeah, and Daryl's coming, yes, the mayor's coming, so come by and say hello.
Yes. Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have any report?
I do not have a report.
Okay, thank you so much. Members, we now get to a very important part of our meeting, the public comments. And before we begin, knowing that the way the rules work, that the queue closes once the first speaker has spoken, I want to give anybody an opportunity right now, and we'll take a breath here, for anybody who has not signed up, who wants to speak, to please sign up right now. Because, because, hold on, you can walk up to the clerk, and we want to hear, and I know all my colleagues who speak in the office, we want to hear from everyone. We want everybody to have an opportunity to be heard, so rather than rush this, I'm going to take a minute here, and I want to give anybody who's in the audience or online the opportunity now to come sign up, so that nobody feels excluded, okay? So let's take 60 seconds, and if you're not signed up already, I know we have about 20 speakers.
Love that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Please, please sign up, okay? And online as well, I know it takes a minute to go online, I don't care, I'm willing to take another 30, 45, 60 seconds, it's all right. Let's just do it. My voice is getting a little creaky anyways, so. Okay, let us begin then with the public comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Ron Brown, then Greg Fishman, then Fatima Garcia. Ron Brown. Mr. Brown, it's your time to present to the council.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to talk a little bit. I'm representing myself and seven other homeowners on Country Riverway in the Pocket Area, adjacent to the canal, not to the river, but it was proposed in 2018 that there'd be a pathway constructed behind our eight homes, and everyone on that street, as opposed to that project. And I gave a petition to Mr. Jennings, and we've had a couple of meetings. I've had calls to the city to see if they could update me on the project. Never had meetings. Somebody, Mr. Atkins had called me about a week ago and said that someone's going to call me, no one ever called me, so it's a total lack of communication about the development of what's going on. And then I noticed a couple of days ago that there are tons and tons and tons of cinder block behind our homes, so evidently the project is proceeding despite the complaints of all the homeowners. And that's, I would love to be updated, and so would the seven other property owners.
Mayor, ma'am, may I?
Yes, please.
So thank you for coming. I really appreciate hearing your voice on the matter. My chief of staff, Dennis Rogers, is right in the back, and he can work with you right now to set up time for us to talk and get a better idea of what the situation is.
Okay.
Answer all the questions that have not been answered for you. Dennis, would you raise your hand so he knows who you are? Okay?
Okay.
And so we can take care of this tonight as far as being able to understand your concerns and to put a plan in place.
Thank you very much, and I'll give the petition to him.
Please.
A copy of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Our next speaker is Greg Fishman, then Fatima Garcia, then Robert Copeland.
Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it's a pleasure to see you. I think most of you know me from my service on the SMUD board. That's not why I'm here tonight. I think many of you also know that I recently started a new day job with Sacramento Regional Transit as their new community relations officer, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you in that capacity, and I'm looking forward to working with you, all of you, and especially the four councilmembers who are on our board, Councilmember Jennings, Valenzuela, Lulowee, and Maple, so I look forward to that relationship. There's clearly no lack of communication and collaboration between this council and SACRT, but I did want to mention a couple of our priority projects very quickly. First of all, the Stockton Boulevard redesign, we're working with the city and the county to really rework that corridor.
Sacramento residents of Stockton Boulevard.
SACRT's role in that will be for bus rapid transit, and we look forward to moving people up and down that corridor rapidly in coordination with the buildout of Aggie Square. We're looking forward to also opening the Dos Rios Station, that's a ways down the line. We have some of the funding in line for that, but that will serve the Mirasol Village in the River District. Again, it's a little ways out, but we're working on more grant funding for that. And then I also wanted to make sure and mention the four-agency partnership. Sacramento RT, along with SMUD, the Sacramento Regional Air Quality District, and SECOG are all working together to collaborate on grant applications. We're supporting each other individually in various grants, and so it's a way for us to put all four oars in the water, pulling in the same direction on some of the projects that are vital for our community. And so with that, I will, I'll end my comments, but I just want to introduce myself to you in my new role, and again, look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next speaker is Fatima Garcia, then Robert Copeland, then Juan Venegas.
My name is Fatima Garcia. I am the Secretary of the Sacramento Labor Council for Latin American Advancement AFL-CIO, and some of you may know me as a political local campaign coordinator. I am here today because of shared pain amongst marginalized communities being murdered by state terror, and in hope to strengthen our solidarity with allies. We are angry that the city continues to fund the militarization of police and the criminalization of people in poverty, primarily black and brown bodies. History has taught us the long-lasting and ongoing patterns of cases where law enforcement murders and incarcerates poor people, minorities are subjected at disproportionate rates. The people are fed up with law enforcement's practice to resort in deadly force without accountability. I am here as a concerned constituent of District 5, Katie Maples' district, and city council, so Katie Maple and city council, you all gaslight the constituents of Sacramento by claiming a written policy most likely authored by the same people that abuse power and enforce the policies will somehow keep our community safe. But both, the Sacramento Sheriff's and Police Department have standing policy for the use of lethal rubber bullets, riot gear, and tear gas, and what we witnessed from local law enforcement was violent repression during the George Floyd mass uprising, where people across the nation demanded accountability for the use of force with evil intent by law enforcement. We are yet to witness full accountability and disciplinary actions against local law enforcement that abuse their power. Katie Maple, you betrayed the people of color in District 5 instead of investing in social programs and organizations like Cafe, doing the work with no funding or support from the city or the county, instead through mutual aid and donations from the community. Now, on the other hand, we have elected officials like you and the rest of your --
Your comments, your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
You need, we have, excuse me, excuse me.
Now, on the other hand, we have elected officials like you and the rest of our colleagues.
Please, thank you.
Ma'am, your speaker's been turned off. The next speaker is Robert Copeland, Juan Venegas, and then Mackenzie.
Mr. Copeland, ma'am. Ma'am, so I want to try to explain, I'm going to try to explain one time because we're going to stay calm here. We, we, excuse me, we have, we have over 20 speakers, and my goal as the mayor, the presiding officer, is to make sure that everyone gets heard. In order, in order to ensure that everyone gets heard, there are limits on the amount of time. We heard you, I think you gave a very compelling presentation, I hear you, thank you. Mr. Copeland. Mr. Copeland.
I agree with the previous speaker, Katie Maple betrayed her constituents. Dale Steinberg, why didn't you do housing day one instead of now? My next comment is Sacramento is our number-one city in California? That is a total joke. There's got to be a better city, Sacramento, where it's a very low bar. Why don't you go to the county board meetings at least once, all of you, and see how they run, I mean, they run a lot better than you people do.
Hey, that'd be great.
I mean, we, Sean Lulowee was right about vacant property, the slummers, why don't you do a vacancy tax? Or if a landlord is absent, unless a property run down, fine them every month until they bring it up to code. You're not doing a lot of this. We need rent control, we need real just cause evictions, not the one that you passed, Mayor Steinberg, with the rest of the city council at that time. That's a joke.
Hi.
I mean, I mean, Mayor Steinberg, you don't know how to run a meeting.
Say that.
I was at a county board meeting one time, late last year, on a jail expansion, from 11 o'clock in the morning until 11 o'clock in the evening, and I left, and they were still going on with public comment. So I don't want to hear about everybody getting ready to speak. You're a joke.
Speak on this.
Why is there forms, an agenda item print for the people? Come on now, Mayor Steinberg, get together.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Juan Venegas. Juan Venegas, Mackenzie, and then Solomon.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor. My name is Juan Venegas, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union here in Sacramento County Local 46. I decided to become a field representative to give back to my fellow members. This organization is the reason I am who I am today. It has changed my life for the better over the years. It gave me a career to provide for my wife and two children. I have been in the construction industry for almost nine years now. I began this journey by enrolling in the carpenter apprenticeship program that has a duration of four years. I had the privilege to learn on the job and in a classroom setting with certified instructors throughout those four years, all while earning a livable wage to support my family and being debt-free from a student loan. Healthcare was something that was provided to me when I began this journey. As my two children were born and have grown, I realized the importance of having healthcare and benefits along with earning a livable wage. I think we can all agree that having healthcare is a necessity. These past nine years, I have commuted all over and have only worked close to home a handful of times. I can personally speak on the triumphs and struggles that construction workers face on a daily basis. That's why I believe that labor standards language for future projects is critical as the type of guideline for developers to follow. Specific language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire would set standards for developers when it comes time to bid on a project. In conclusion, I ask you this question: How can you, as the city council, better support the working class here in Sacramento? Thank you all for your time, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mackenzie. Calling Mackenzie is Solomon, and then Shelley.
I wasn't sure what I came to speak about today. I think I get lost in the details of it all when it ends up being the same shit different day. I think my biggest struggle is having compassion in this place because of the lack of compassion this city's policy shows to those in crisis. In just the last three months, the city has enacted hundreds of sweeps, could have been hundreds and won had we not come in here with as much power as we have to stop you. I give thanks for camp resolution. I'm exhausted from having to fight you always. In the last few weeks, your militarized police tried to intimidate a vigil full of people they traumatized and almost killed during 2020 and then bought a tank on the consent calendar, even though thousands have said no. Last week, y'all moved public comment to the front, knowing that folks were here to speak to you in efforts to not hear it and escape accountability. Hell, even the tit-for-tat that has, that this city has done to public comment to curb public participation or dissent over years is alarming, from the shortening of times to the moving of public agenda to the end so that the suits can leave before you hear the horror stories, and then your rules and all of your decorum. I mean, I could go on and on about the lack of compassion and cooperation with your community and your most vulnerable. Like how disconnected you all are from the crisis that is happening is alarming, considering that I -- that I know that you sit there because you care, question mark? I'm just confused anymore, and I'm tired of the same shit different day, and we never come close to any real change until we shut you down or destroy your shit. And I'm actually a very peaceful person who definitely engages in self-defense, but I would much rather do work with my community to build housing, healing, education, gardens, access to choice and opportunity, all things that we actually out here doing, only stagnated by your city policy and your interest in economic development instead of community development and your inability to hear that it's all wrong. We got some demands, and I really just am, if only you would expand public comment time so you could hear from this community what it really needs.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Solomon. Following Solomon is Shelley, then Samuel Lewis. Solomon, Shelley, then Samuel Lewis.
I think you can come over here, buddy.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Solomon.
Hi, Solomon.
So, guys, there's four subjects. Defund the police, fund schools, parks, kids, Black Lives Matter, and stop sweeps. Those are the subjects. So, defund the police, okay? The police doesn't deserve money. They're just hurting people. That's all they do. And schools, parks, and kids deserve all that money you give to the police. Daryl Steinberg. Black Lives Matter. Stop killing black people. It's out of control. And stop sweeps. And everyone is equal. Justice is a human right. 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 Got it, guys? Got it, guys? Everyone should know that now, okay? All of you should know that. I'm talking to Mindy Capi, like the funniest name ever, says, okay, you're done with your conversation, okay?
Thank you, Solomon.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, bye.
Next speaker is Shelley.
Hi, Shelley Williams, D5. I didn't have a chance to prepare my public comment today, so I'm going to do what Mac wasn't able to do. I'm going to go through the demands that we're collectively bringing here and talk a little bit, expound. So number one, we demand a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. Two, we demand City Council approve all SCPRC recommendations on military equipment use. Three, we demand a data, we demand a data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. Four, we demand an end to SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Five, we demand an end to SACPD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers. Six, we demand SACPD dissolve its gang enforcement and problem-oriented police teams. Seven, we demand a moratorium on all homeless sweeps by SACPD. And eight, we demand an end to SACPD's traffic enforcement. Fresh in my mind right now is the sweep, there was a lot of sweeps last week, actually, a lot. The one on T Street, which I know was definitely related to the ADA lawsuit, you know, you know, I hadn't been to one in a minute, and it was, you know, horrific as they always are, but it really struck me how many cops were there, standing around for hours, doing nothing, while forensic clean and others were out there doing some of the grunt work. And, I don't know. There was, the first side that was cleared was the side that was cited in the lawsuit, in the article. There was a lot of focus on this one side of the street where somebody who was on a motorized vehicle had trouble.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Samuel Lewis, then O, then Nikki. Samuel Lewis, O, and then Nikki.
I have a paper that, isn't there like a thing that we can-
Sure. You can set it down on the-
On here?
Yes. We won't start the clock until you-
Okay, can I see it? I just want to adjust it. Wait, can you see it? Am I doing this right? Okay.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. Just speak.
Okay. Hi, my name is Samuel Lewis. My pronouns are they/them. I'm from District Five, Oak Park, that is now under Katie Maple. I am here to reiterate the demands community members have proposed last week. One, we demand no more purchases of military equipment. We demand the City Council to approve all SCPRC recommendations. We demand Sacramento City to create a traffic enforcement dashboard. Four, we demand to end SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Five, we demand to end SACPD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers. Six, we demand SACPD's gang enforcement teams and all problem-oriented policing teams to be dissolved. Seven, we demand the removal of all Sacramento police officers from traffic enforcement entirely. Eight, we demand SACPD to stop all sweeps of unhoused community. Eight, we demand SACPD to stop all sweeps of the unhoused community. Our most vulnerable population is under attack from the city. All police must stop the racist harassment and stealing of our unhoused homes. There was massive sweeps last week, and there were sweeps today, and it affects so many of our community. Yeah, that's, that's all I have to say today, but I will stay here for the rest of my time.
Okay.
Thank you for coming today, by the way.
Wish you were here last week. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is O. Evan.
I'm going to use the screen thing too, so if y'all want to put, there we go. So it might be a little hard to see, but don't worry about it because I'm going to read it for y'all. I don't know about you guys, but I'm tired. I know as much as y'all don't want us here, we don't want to be here. I moved to Sacramento when I was five years old with my family. We moved here from Reno, Nevada because we were struggling with homelessness and addiction, my parents were. We moved to Sacramento because we wanted a better life. From that point then to now, the amount of resources, the amount of housing, the amount of affordable housing I've seen, really from, I'm 30 now. I moved here when I was five. That's 25 years, and I haven't seen a lot of change. You want to sit up here and talk about Go Pacers? I played for Grant High School on the team, on the basketball team. The basketball, my basketball coach, her daughter, played at the game you guys are talking about. Like, this is generations. I grew up always in fear of the police, always in fear. But you want to sit here and talk about how you have an officer who quit in 2020, right? Because of the culture in SACPD, anti-black culture. Now, I don't got a lot of money, but I could bet all my money right now, as I still live with my family struggling, as we were just unhoused last year, I bet all my money their culture isn't too different from yours. I could guarantee that. I could guarantee that, right? It's crazy that we have to sit up here and you see anger and you see screaming, but it's pain. It's pain. We don't want, I don't want to see another cousin of mine get shot or killed. I don't want to see another kid that I used to mentor while being, working for your city get shot and killed on the streets. I don't want to have to worry about cops behind me pulling me over and that means it's the end of my life or somebody that I love's life. That's ridiculous. You want to sit up here and talk about a rook? It's not about the damn rook, it's about your law enforcement. It doesn't matter if they have guns, it doesn't matter if they have military vehicles, they do not care about us. They do not care about us, and you guys keep showing us that you don't care about us either. It's exhausting.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Nikki. Following Nikki is Evan. Next speaker is Nikki, then Evan.
Yeah, I guess Ben said blessings. Yeah. Start by saying, you know, this is a movement about love, straight up, for communities who felt a lack of it, particularly via like institutions and policy. So we're here about that, for our black and brown communities, and to really just like, be like, take seriously your obligation to make policies that implement, that follow through on the words you say, on the love that may, we hope, exist. This frustration is not about the rook, thanks for saying. It's about ongoing SACPD and this council's unwillingness to take accountability, to meaningfully engage with critique, and to instead meet it with tear gas, rubber bullets, repression, and ongoing relentless rhetoric. This is about Joseph Mann. It's about Dejawn Flannot, Daryl Richards, Brandon Smith, all killed by SACPD with impunity. Years back, y'all, 2015, Joseph Mann, okay? Ongoing. So many others abused, caged, mistreated, lied on without any real accountability or oversight by this body, even when you're clearly given it by the state. You won't even take it, you won't even use it, you won't even ask the good questions, right? And this deference, trying to say last week, this deference is rooted in white supremacy, patriarchy, and classism. And there is no way that your body is exempt from that, and you need to take a look at the body you're in, ask yourself, how, how am I complicit in that? And then say no. Refuse, refuse, refuse. Make something different.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker is Evan, NBW, and then Carly. Next speaker is Evan. May I have 10 more speakers? Is Evan here? Following NBW is Carly, then Jared. Please.
Each member of you is part of this clansal, the 12 of you. I thought I would do a quote, since you all love to say MLK quotes and all these cute little shit, you know? So I thought I'd do one that you guys might actually remember. "The police are simply the hired enemies of this population. They are present to keep the Negro in his place and to protect white business interests, and they have no other function. They are moreover, even in a country which makes the very grave error of equating ignorance with simplicity, quite stunningly ignorant. And since they know that they are hated, they are always afraid." They got their hands on their, on their belts, right? They got all their stuff ready to go. "One cannot simply arrive at a more surefire formula for cruelty. This is why those pious call to 'respect the law,' civility, decorum, always to be heard from prominent citizens each time the ghetto explodes, are so obscene. The law is meant to be my servant and not my murderer. To respect the law in the context in which the American Negro finds himself is simply to surrender his self-respect." That is James Baldwin. "I will not stay in this town while all of you allow your citizens to be killed, whether that is because of a sweep, that is because of the police, which you so arrogantly said that they wouldn't use these military weapons against the citizens. Shame on you." And you, District Three, since I can't say y'all's name, but you can say our names, right? You received the most money from the police office of everybody in the commission. Don't show your face in the Thomas, girl. Don't do it. Black and brown boys are in the Thomas, the boys that you are now going to be, you know, allowed to be killed.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Carly. Next speaker is Carly, Jared, and Bug. Jacob, would you mind crapping this?
No, I can grab it. Jacob don't need to grab it. You could have asked me. Y'all know my name now.
Okay. Fuck you.
No, you're good.
Thank you, Jacob. Carly.
Interesting, the clock was ticking before I was even speaking. Give me those two seconds back.
Play this. Play this.
Fight y'all for seconds. Isn't that fucking a joke?
Go ahead, start the two minutes, start the two minutes now. Go ahead.
Okay.
Start it now.
Sure. So this was talked about in a recent City Council meeting about the truth and reconciliation process that y'all approved on June 15th of 2021, and if I recall correctly, it's 2023 now. So it's been almost two years. I know that there's been like a lot of woo-woo whatever, oh, it's other people, it's not our fault, but it is your fault because you haven't pushed for it. And that, it's clearly a symbolic move to approve that because the truth and reconciliation process is when there is a body of people tasked with discovering and revealing past wrongdoings by a government in the hope of resolving conflict left over from the past. That could include human rights violations, war crimes, or other serious abuses that took that took place over many years. And that has happened again and again and again and again in this city, and we have come to you and we have told you again and again and again and again, and you continue to refuse to listen to us and act directly against what we're asking you to do. I don't know how you expect us to trust you. It's, it's clear that it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything to you. Just a couple of weeks ago, you voted to approve the purchase of new military equipment for SACPD when they still have not been held to account for almost killing my friend. They were shot in the face with multiple rubber bullets and a tear, a tear gas grenade that was launched from a grenade launcher directly at their face. It caused multiple skull fractures, totally like dissolved their entire jaw. There was a near fatal brain bleed. One of our friends had to hold their face on their body, and they had to hold their face on their skull as they drove them to the emergency room. And you still have not held those cops accountable, and you're giving them more military equipment?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Jared. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jared. Following Jared is Bug.
Carly. Your two minutes, your two minutes are up. Well, that's okay. Let's call, let's call for the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jared, then Bug, then Andy Bervinsky.
You cut off the mic.
Jared.
Carly. You're welcome, you're welcome back next week and every week, but we have to, we have to go on. Okay? Please. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jared, then Bug.
Jared and Bug, please. Jared and Bug, please. Okay. I understand. Okay.
Jared.
Okay. Next, after, after Jared. If, if Jared and, if-
Jared's not here. Jared?
Next, after Jared. If Jared and...
Jared's not here.
Okay, Carly? Please do... Okay. I'm going to ask everyone to sit down, and I'm gonna read the following, and you can try to shout if you want. "Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council's Rules and Procedures." If you continue, I will ask you first, and then I will order you to leave the meeting. But first, first of all, let's hear from everyone. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Jared? Okay, Jared, you're not gonna speak then tonight. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Bug. Andy Bervinski.
Bug? Who's after Bug?
Andy Bervinski.
Andy Bervinski.
And then Rachel.
And Rachel.
So none of those?
None, okay? Right on up. We wanna make sure that everyone is heard. Go ahead. Go right ahead.
All right. Did I break the rules with that one?
Go right ahead.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Jared. I live in District 5. I wanna echo all the comments about the police and to the purchase and use of military equipment for the city. Super bad use of grant money, and it's illegal not to have a use policy for that military equipment before purchasing it. I wanna highlight that the policy is probably more important than the military equipment. Guns will be fired from behind that rook. Anyway, I'm actually here to ask you to please stop the inhumane sweeps of the homeless camps. There's a lot of stuff going on. I was witness to the sweep last Friday on T and 30th, and I know there's been a lot of sweeps this last week. I understand that you're trying to please residents and businesses who are tired of seeing homeless encampments. I don't think those residents and businesses really understand the impact the sweeps are having, not only on the homeless who are being swept, but also the surrounding neighborhoods. I don't think they would approve of the way the sweeps are being handled if they truly knew and understood what was going on. "The destruction of these encampments does absolutely nothing to help with the homelessness and only causes more harm. Trying to police some 20,000 homeless in Sacramento, moving them from block to block, place to place, is an asinine effort to manage the problem. Try providing services for those living at the encampments. Try providing trash pickup. Buy up nearby vacant lots if you do not want people on the sidewalks and allow for encampments to be there. You are implicit in a fight against homelessness. It is a fight that you can never win. The city and county is in a holding pattern, making homeless lives more and more inconvenient, but to what end?"
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bug. Next speaker is Bug. Piers, Bug is not here. Andy Bervinski, and then Rachel. Is Andy still here? Rachel?
Rachel's here.
Following Rachel is a phone number, 2250.
I'm here to reiterate the demands that the community... I'm here to reiterate the demands of the community made last week. We demand a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. No new purchase of military equipment until all lawsuits and investigations about SACPD's response to George Floyd protests, improper military equipment use, and allegations of racism and ties to known hate groups are resolved. Number two, we demand city council approve all Sacramento City Police Review Commission recommendations on military equipment use. Number one, requiring SACPD to use comparative and demographic reporting in all yearly MEU reports. Number two, requiring SACPD to clearly state the limits and conditions for when military equipment cannot be used. Three, designating independent oversight by OPSA, the Inspector General, and the SCPRC to ensure SACPD's compliance with AB 481 and its MEU policy. Four, create an upper limit on SACPD's military equipment stockpile and requiring all military equipment purchases be approved separately from its yearly MEU reports and policy updates. Next demand, we demand a data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. We want Sacramento City to create a traffic enforcement dashboard so that the public may easily know who SACPD stops, when, where, why, and what outcome resulted. We also expect all law enforcement data on non-traffic stops and use of force be tracked and reported publicly every year. Number four, we demand an end to SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. No more Terry stops of Black and Brown motorists.
Thank you for your comments.
To those who have signed up online, so let's go to the speakers online, please.
Our first speaker is a phone number, last four digits, 2250. If you'll unmute, and then Jennifer Jones.
Hi, this is Evan Minton. My pronouns are he and they. I have a hodgepodge of comments, but first I wanna thank my council member, Katie Valenzuela, and Mayor Proten, Mai Vang, for their vote against further militarizing our police. I'm a white person who does not live with a police presence or fear of the police in my life, and so the council vote will likely not impact me, but I take very seriously the impact on my friends and community members of color who are impacted. I believe that conversation and reconciliation can happen, and I hope that it does, and please let me know if I can play a part. Also, in a long-awaited, thank you, and a completely different subject matter, this time in working to keep our unhoused neighbors safe during the storm, I worked specifically with my council member in her office, and Council Member Katie Maple, and I thank them and the mayor for all of their work on this matter. As a board member of the Midtown Neighborhood Association, I thank my council member, Katie Valenzuela, for her request to revise our weather-based criteria and pause any homelessness enforcement action when weather-based criteria is triggered, barring any urgent or private property trespass issues, and I want you to know that our Neighborhood Association stands ready to work with you. And I also just wanna note that trauma happens when people don't have the resources that they need. Finally, I just wanna ask the council to consider letting experts on both sides of an issue give formal presentations at council meetings, especially when what's being discussed is something that can poke community members' lives at risk. If it's a sound issue, then no one should feel threatened by that. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. I consider many of you friends and appreciate this chance to give my comment.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jennifer Jones.
Hello. Seems like we all have a big problem with our city council and our city leadership. I personally would like to understand why the city manager, Chan, has been given a 42% raise over his initial salary in just a six-year period. Our city is an absolute mess, and it has gotten worse under the leadership of Mayor Steinberg and Howard Chan. The people of the Deerfield Mesa Grande neighborhood have been dealing with a toxic smoke in our air for over four years. The police and fire have failed to respond to numerous calls and have even tasked unpaid citizens with investigating the source. They have lied repeatedly about there being no evidence of plastic or other toxins being burnt. I have photographic evidence of all of this, and I will be conducting an air quality test the next time our air is contaminated. Councilmember Mai Vang and her team facilitated a sweep of the encampment when this is not what we asked for. They never approached the people to let them know that what they were doing was not okay and inconsiderate of the neighbors around them. Instead, they just uprooted them completely. What this did was, this is after three years of making an excuse that you couldn't move them because you had nowhere to put them, and then what do you do? You just move them, and you don't house them. So we have a massive problem with air quality in our neighborhood. We have a problem with your police not deciding which laws they're allowed to enforce and what's convenient for them, and not doing anything that benefits the people of this city. The homeless problem has grown exponentially under your leadership, no matter what you wanna lie about and try to gaslight Mayor Steinberg. It has gone from under 3,000 to over 9,000 since you've been in office. You should resign. Lining the pockets of failed leaders is not and never has been the answer. If I do not see movement to combat this health and safety risk to my family, I will seek legal action. We have rights. Maybe you should recognize.
Greetings. My name is Mike Snell. Can you hear me? Hello?
Mike Snell? Mike, it's your turn to present to the council.
Greetings, council. My name is Mike Snell. I'm a local veteran, also social equity member, candidate, social equity member. I'm gonna start with just, I had a number of things, but I'm just only gonna touch on one thing for me personally. In the process of opening my dispensary storefront, I finally found the right location after numerous attempts and headaches and, oh my goodness, but we finally passed all inspections, and now I'm coming up on two weeks, waiting on the city to schedule me for my final walkthrough. If I can get some assistance with that, my location is 8125 36th Avenue, which is in D6. Shout out to Councilman Garrett, if you can assist me in any kind of way. In addition, going forward, I'm gonna focus on with everyone else, golly, I can't even touch on the other stuff on, because everyone else has brought up good points. You know, we're going into a recession, right, and we're talking about budgeting. So if going into the recession, how can we best support our communities, it's definitely not police funding, okay? If anything, the police funding, if anything, should not be militarization. Let's try some emotional intelligence training. You know, you got guys that, you know, with an attitude and a badge, you know, that just have no emotional intelligence training. So we need that, if anything. We've had a war in this country against everything, from terrorism, a war on drugs. Okay, now, the war on poverty, it's not the sweeps. The war on poverty is the mechanisms and the systems in place that causes the people to be on the streets. The city manager's gotten this increase in pay because of inflation and cost of living has gone up. Unfortunately, not everyone else gets that same benefit. So how do we offset that? You know what I mean? Obviously, if the city manager can get his pay increased, the rest of the city can't get that, and its constituents to survive, what can we do in other means to help people through this?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you all for participating tonight. We are adjourned.